Thought this was, oh, okay. Well, the special town meeting, Darlene comes to.
Yes.
All right.
All right. Let's do the special town meeting started in the name of the state of Maine, you would be required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Vinyl Haven in said county and state qualified by law to vote in the town affairs to meet at the Watkin School Meeting Room in said town on Tuesday, the twenty eighth day of November, twenty twenty three at five o'clock in the afternoon, then in man to act upon articles one through three as set below to win. Article one, your like moderator should decide at said meeting and to fix compensation. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Jeff Arison with a pay of a hundred dollars.
Second.
And I mean reasons for all to vote.
We got Pam. Anybody got a Pam? Don't look at my balance.
Oh, okay.
It's secret.
Okay. But you guys. We got three dollars.
That's what's thirty-three dollars a piece.
Okay, so. Yeah, do you support the Constitution of the United States for long as you continue to citizen thereof? Do you support the case for the best of your ability to do even come in on you as moderator of this meeting? Or put it in the Constitution and law of the state?
I do.
And this is the warrant, that's a copy of it.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the special town meeting. We have two items to vote upon. Article two shall an ordinance entitled the town of Vinyl Haven land use ordinance be enacted as amended. This ordinance revision re-formats and amends the existing land use ordinance. The amended ordinance can be found on the town's website. Copies are available at the town office, and you can also call the town office to receive a digital copy should you wish. I will accept a motion to pass article two. So move and second?
Second.
Move and second it. Is there discussion on article two for land use ordinance? Just so that you know, we're discussing the first article to be voted upon tonight, which is the land use ordinance. Any questions, comments? Okay. I see none, therefore I will call for a vote. All in favor of the ordinance as written? And all opposed? Thank you. Our motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. Article three shall an ordinance entitled addressing ordinance to be enacted as amended. This ordinance amends the existing addressing ordinance. The existing one assigns the responsibility to the code enforcement officer. Instead, our addressing officer should be the person and that's what apparently this ordinance will do. The addressing officer is Max and Jack Fire. Yeah, any, I'll take a motion to move this forward.
So move.
So move, thank you, and second?
Okay.
Move and second, we thank you. Any discussion?
Hello. I'm sorry, I don't understand this. Could you explain it again?
I don't know if I can appropriately, but Darlene, please.
Well.
Marjorie or?
It has to do with the E nine one one ordinance that we adopted years ago when we put in the road signs and named all the roads. There has, and according to that ordinance, there has to be an addressing officer. And that's always been Mark, but this, this ordinance, as stated, identifies the code enforcement officer.
When you say addressing, you mean to make addresses for the signs?
No, when somebody builds a house and they need an address.
Oh, it's for an address.
Yeah, you have to create an address for a new structure. That's all it is.
Wasn't sure what the word is, how the word addressing was being used.
Got it. And as a post office address or a
physical address.
Or new.
Physical address.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I wasn't sure that it was, that's what that meant. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor of article, formerly article three? All opposed? Motion carries. Will anybody in the third meeting call for an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I hear that.
Second.
Is there a second? There is a second. Is there vast discussion around adjournment? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor of adjournment? And all opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll see.
Didn't go.
All right, Cam. Get folks ready. I'll go on Facebook and you can take it over. Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
I will.
I'll call this town of Vinyl Haven Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Item one, roll call. Tom Anthony, Vlad Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer is absent, myself virtually, I guess, Elizabeth Bunker, deputy town clerk, and Marjorie Stratton, town manager. Item two, approve agenda.
Motion.
A second? Oh, go ahead. All in favor?
Okay.
Approve the minutes from the November fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, you didn't.
Uh, glad, so it's three, zero.
Yes.
Yeah, because in a, the select meeting, Pam can vote.
Right.
Yeah. So yeah, it gives me three.
So are we all, did we approve the minutes?
Approved minutes are approved.
Okay. Number four, approved and signed treasures warrant, number twenty-two.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor? Number five, communications?
I don't think there are any.
Okay. Number six, speakers from the floor?
Kathy Young is raising her hand. Kathy?
I have a question. Why don't we, why does the housing initiative on the agenda? You don't know anything about it?
Oh, um, sorry.
I didn't hear the question.
Why is the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative cruise quarters on the agenda? So it's on the agenda because Aurel Gornau from Maine DOT, who was the project manager for their parking lot and sidewalk renovations contacted me and said that Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative had contacted him about acquiring the cruise quarters. And Aurel wanted some kind of guidance from the Board of Selectmen about whether they support, whether the Board of Selectmen supported that or I'm sorry. Do you have another question, Ellen?
Okay, I thought Kathy.
Uh, you can address Pam.
No, fine.
Does everybody else sit? Any more questions? Okay, moving on, number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. Seven A, Woodard and Curran.
Um, so we're still waiting for what would you call it, the, the proposal from Drew Keir for the Public Works building modifications? We're still looking for the punch list items to be completed at the transfer station. I guess the good news, I'll just jump around to the downtown project. We did finally receive the last mortgage consent that had to do with Foxon Electric from USDA. So we're, we're hoping to receive the was it certificate of title from our attorneys, which is something that we needed in order to, before we send the plans on to EDA. And then they have at least twenty days, if not thirty days, to review those plans and then hopefully we can go out to bid. So that's really good news. So that hurdle has been crossed.
Excellent.
Uh, do you have any questions about the Woodard and Curran report?
I don't.
Everybody else sit? Okay.
The downtown project as well.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if Gabe was gonna jump on tonight. She's not here, so I think that's the big news that, you know, we're finally ready to get those plans, get the title certificate from our attorney and get those plans to EDA and get their approval. So a few steps closer.
Okay, moving on to seven C, Public Works.
Not much to say, actually, Pam. Um, we've just, we're getting ready for snow season, as I was saying earlier, and trying to gather up some loose ends of grading roads and getting those ready for winter. Little behind because of the storms, obviously. The Western Star isn't as bad as I thought it was. Oh, it's, thank goodness, it does not need an engine rebuild. Yep, yep, it's, actually, I don't have a price on it yet, but there was just a coolant leak. It was not going into the oil, which is a huge plus. So they're fixing that. We're waiting on a new oil pan because the old one was rusting pretty severely. I wanted that fixed before we lost it halfway through the winter. So we're just waiting on that repair and then we'll have knock on wood, all of our trucks back and ready to roll.
Awesome.
Yeah. All right, that's about it for me.
I'm not gonna say anything because I don't wanna jinx the world.
I, I see you guys graded down to Granite Island today, I think.
Yeah.
Did you guys get some more of that? Take that patch machine up there. I know it's supposed to be cold tomorrow, but it's supposed to warm back up a little bit and oh, there's like a big hole in front of Rowley's.
Yeah.
Um, hit some of them before we do get some snow.
Yeah, we've gotta wait for the water to dry up in those holes first, but we, we have that on our list to do.
All right.
We gotta do it between rainstorms and after they dry out or they just, it doesn't adhere and won't stick in, so. But yes, that's bad and there's North Haven Road's got some bad places. And obviously around the island road as always.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, well, you guys have patched, it's come out good. Just keep, keep up on that. Like I say, send a couple guys all the time if you can.
Yeah.
Volipon, that, that project came out good.
Thank you, yeah.
Been ordered a couple times. It looks nice.
Good, good, thank you.
What were you guys doing today? Driving back and forth from the fire department up to the medical center?
Um, I went up for a blood draw real quick.
Okay, well, I saw, I thought I saw a truck go back like four or five times. I didn't know.
No, we, and then we delivered some packages for the town office.
Okay.
And then we had to go to the old fire hall because I forgot we had to shut off the outlets because there's been cars charging there again. Yeah, my little brain was kinda like split peas today. Drive me here, drive me there.
You're driving on snow routes, what you were doing.
That's what you should have said, Millie.
Right, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't at the medical. That was it, I, yeah. Just getting to, getting to the right place and then not going to the next right place and having to turn around and go back, but we got it done.
Well, you know, you know, somebody's watching you, so.
Oh, they're always watching. Hi, everybody on Facebook land.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me. I've got myself in hot water now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, number eight, old business, island and city proposal.
I don't see patience here. She wanted this back on the agenda from the last meeting, but she's not here, so.
Okay.
Hey, what's the next meeting?
I'll get in touch with her.
Okay.
Uh, number nine, new business, Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative Cruise Quarters.
So as I was explaining earlier, I got an email from Aurel Gornau. Again, he is the project manager for the DOT project for their parking lot and sidewalk renovations. So he said, uh, the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative has reached out to us about them taking and relocating the former cruise quarters building currently located at the ferry terminal. I have been asked to reach out to the town and get confirmation that the town is in support of this. I don't know where they intend to relocate the building, just that they intend to relocate it and use it for housing. Uh, and Aurel just wants us to respond via email or letter stating that the town supports and or endorses this or not. So that's the discussion on the table.
What's the square? Done that?
It's like thirty by forty three.
Thirty by forty two?
Thirty by forty.
Forty.
It has four, four bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen on a living room and a mechanic room.
So Ellen, can you give us, oh, I'm sorry, I should raise my hand, I guess.
I must say, though, my original thought was that would make a really good building for the town to have for when we have an issue of police housing. But I know that the police weren't real confused about it the first time around, but I still of the opinion that the town really should have housing for when we have people in or when we have contractors in long term or if police even. So I'm, I'm mixed on this one. I understand where you're coming from, but I kinda like the idea of the town actually having that house, but I don't know how much support there is for that either.
Can I give you a little history? I heard that the, um, crew quarters was gonna be torn down. So I called Bill Geary. I haven't been in touch with the gentleman that Marjorie mentioned. Bill must have reached out to him. And I asked him if the building was gonna be torn down and if there was any anyone asking for it. He said no, that, I think he said the town had interested in it, but had not didn't really follow through or didn't want it or something. There was some, some interest, but it hadn't gone anywhere. So I told him that the, um, town housing committee had morphed into a nonprofit housing organization that we were gonna buy a piece of land with money that we're gonna get from main housing. And we wanted to move it to that property and turn it into two units. That's, that's our plan. But Bill said, you know, you can have it as long as we can get through the red tape. So I've been emailing Bill and he's been emailing back and he sent me the architectural plan, but we don't have a for sure from the state that we could have it. But we do have a plan. We have a place we wanna move it to, and our whole intention and purpose is to create housing. So we do have a letter from the select board saying that they support what we're doing to alleviate the government burden. We got a special exemption, um, I don't, I shouldn't call it an exemption, exception from the IRS to create workforce housing under the nonprofit, um, category for creating housing.
Workforce housing, what does that mean?
Creating housing that working people can afford. Whether they're lawyers or doctors or policemen or teachers or whomever, sturmen, lobstermen, something people can afford.
You know, personally, I would prefer if we could wait until our next meeting. Maybe we could get more information and then we, and be face to face to be able to talk. This is kinda difficult over Zoom to make a decision about this. I am in support of housing. Um, it's great. I agree with, I also agree with what Don's saying, but I think that it's, I feel what we should just have a much deeper discussion, thorough discussion about this. Um, there's a lot more to it than just moving it, you know, you're gonna have to find out, can it be moved? What's gonna happen to it if it's moved? Um, from, from the town's perspective. Um, I think that's you, Ellen, behind banner. I can't tell. Okay, yes, go ahead.
We've had extensive conversations about moving it. We're getting every measure of moving it. We know what it'll take to move it. We, we looked into all that. We were never told that this wasn't a sure thing, so we spent a lot of time and energy and are planning our proposal to main housing based, based on being able to acquire this building. So it's, I came here tonight for the special town meeting. I had no idea that this was on the agenda.
Uh huh. Well, what do you guys think? I mean, we're certainly in support. Is that all we need to do is just, um, give our?
Do you guys have a piece of land bought yet? Do you need the house before you buy the land? How?
We, we, we don't have the land bought yet because we have to get money from, we have to have an application approved by main housing. The application is to buy a piece of land and to create two units out of the crew quarters. So if we don't have the crew quarters, we can't make this application. We can't move forward because this is our plan is to have, sit, have, um, three units on one property.
Do you have the? I guess what I'm saying is, do you guys have a piece of property all picked out?
We have a willing seller with town water and town sewer. We have, uh, the construction analyst coming out next week from main housing to review all of these. And we've had Genesis Loan Fund come out previously who's reviewed all, all the properties, including the crew quarters and thinks it's a great project.
Marjorie, were you, were you about to say something?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you were about to say something.
I need Pam if you wanna discuss it more. I'm, I'm, whatever you wanna do, Pam.
I know what, I, I know what it was. I was gonna say, what more information would you like me to gather? I guess that was the, the question I had.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't really know. I just, I'm not sure what, tonight, what, what is our purpose tonight? What do we?
Uh, so Aurel Gornau, uh, is asking if the, um, town selectmen can respond about whether they support this project.
Right, okay.
Whether they support the Vinyl Haven Housing Init- Initiative, uh, taking this building and moving it, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I understand. All right, so I, I would, um, like to approve that. What do you, what do you folks think? Um, the rest of the board, that's? No? Yes?
I, I, I'd hate to see the building torn down. Housing, how do you, there's definitely an issue. I do understand what Don's saying and I agree with him. I think that, uh, the town, one of the bigger issues with our, our police presence problem, a lack of police presence problem is the lack of housing. And without that, it's, no matter who becomes, who knocks kind of sense out, it's gonna be a challenge. But I would hate to see this building torn down and I'll put the good news if these fine people already have a plan in place. I would like, I would like to see a little more, more of a formal proposal about the initial, what this plan is before we let main DOT know that yes, we're in support of it because we haven't seen anything about this plan other than what we were just told two minutes ago.
I apologize. I should have contacted Ellen. I just, um, I didn't, I didn't see it as that complicated, but, um, I apologize to Ellen.
Thank you.
And, uh, for not letting them know it was on the agenda. I didn't.
I would propose, oh, I see a hand. Somebody has a question in the back. Don, okay.
It seems like, does the town have a piece of property it could be moved to? Because Ellen has each property. She's got it all figured out. She can't move forward. Why couldn't the policeman stay at the housing that they're making?
Well, that, that, I guess my point is that we knew nothing of the plan and we're being asked to put our stamp of approval on a plan we haven't seen. That's really the only concern. We have had no formal proposal about this plan, not that we're required to, but now we're being asked to put our stamp of approval on it without seeing something, and that's not something I'm willing to do. Pam?
Yes.
I would like to have you study for a couple of days to get a hold of the sheriff and just double check and make sure that that they do not have an interest in something like this if we wanna hit. Lacking that, I'm fully supporting what you're after, but I, I think right now we have a situation where we have an issue with the, uh, with the current location where pets are not, may or may not be allowed, and this could be a factor. So I'd like to just go get that resolved and then make a decision on this. Now, I don't know that we have to wait two weeks, but I can say right now that if the sheriff has no interest in that, by all means, I have my support with you.
I mean, if the town got it, we'd have to, we'd have to move it. Can it stay?
We'd have to move it, no question. They want that land for packing.
Okay.
Well, I think that the point that the sheriff's office made is it's, it's not really appropriate for a family, that it's, it's meant for cruise quarters. And and, you know, I agree with what everybody's saying. We, if we, if they gave it to the town, we would have to find a piece of property and move it and and still, um, make renovations to make it appropriate for housing.
It's gonna have to be, um, modified, no matter whether you divide it or whether you have it for, make it so that it's suitable for housing for a sheriff.
Right, and to add on to that, there would be, um, you know, there'd have to be money in the budget to, to move the building and to renovate the building and, you know, so that's all. You know, you'd have to wait until town meeting to see if you've got the money. You know, it's, it, it would be quite a process.
I'm not sure it has to be.
One other, one other factor is, when is it gonna get demolished? By, by the?
It has to be moved by spring.
Okay.
It'll get time.
And, but if, if I have to wait two weeks to find out whether or not this court is in favor of this, then there's no point having people come out for main housing and there's a deadline for us to apply.
What's the deadline?
I got a message from, from the head of main housing today that there's, that there's a time limit on our application.
And what's the time limit?
He said February first, but we need all these people to come out from main housing and all these other people and get all the numbers exactly right. It's a very complicated application. It's our first one. We have to do it right. So we really don't have a lot of time to be waiting. I had no idea that this was, you know, a possibility. We don't have a form of document. We're gonna be putting that together with main housing to make sure it's, it's all, you know, with the way it should be. Is there any way you could have a, a vote of, a positive vote and, but subject to the sheriff's department?
I'm okay with that. It's, I'm not sure they're gonna want it, but I, I know that there is a situation where we might need to dish other housing. And I really, you know, law enforcement right now is one of my top priorities in the town. I know housing's important, but something's more important.
I, I sent you a, um, um, a property that was for sale that would have been perfect for two deputies. And you, you told me you brought it up to the select board and they weren't interested in buying it, and it would be a lot less expensive than moving this and renovating it and putting in water and sewer and electricity and all the other things that are gonna be required. I would suggest you buy something. I would suggest you buy something that's already on the market and already built.
Well, yeah, but with all due respect, you know, the selectmen can't just make a decision to buy something on their own. There has to be money in their budget. It has to go through a town meeting process to raise money for that purpose and be approved by the town. So it's not, it's not, it's not as simple as just saying, oh, well, you had an opportunity to buy something and you didn't. So.
And frankly, the situation with getting police covered out here has been uh. Chaotic at best and we, at the time when we're looking at it. It didn't look like we had any prospects of uh two people, let alone one person, I mean, one, let alone two out here. And I think we have that opportunity now. I just don't wanna blow it by not having an option.
I, I assume that once the project is put together formally, that there's gonna be permitting process and. I'll, I'll go through the town permitting process and all of that in order to be approved. So, if I'm sitting here thinking about it, because this is fresh and so I, knowing that, thinking about that. I've said my last statement. I'm good.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna move along here. I, I feel that um I'm still, I'm still in favor of. Um, giving approval to the housing initiative.
Uh, I'll second it because I don't see.
Was that a motion? If that's, if that is what is required, yes, that is my motion.
And I'll second it because I don't see the town being able to move fast enough to do anything with this and. These very nice people already have it in motion and in play.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed?
Abode?
I'll just pass.
I think you have to vote, right?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, good. Let's move along. That was a good discussion, though. Thank you.
Um, yes, approval. I'll send Aurel a note and then a letter later.
And can you give me the name of the man who you were communicating with?
She can have a flat coffee. And then I'll just get another coffee tomorrow.
Okay, are we ready to move on or are we?
Think so, yes.
Number ten report of town manager.
Um, I just wanted to review that uh town hall meeting that we had um. Oh, I forget the date now, November fifteenth.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to review it because um when the selectmen voted to sign on to this program. Uh, uh. I'm sorry, I wanna say, I wanna say William. You weren't on the board yet, but I wanted to give you a little bit of history.
Yeah, cuz that one really was just, we agreed that we should look at it, but there was no commitment to it.
What you voted, what you specifically voted, uh and I reviewed here was to. That I was to sign a letter of support. That was kind of a boilerplate letter of support that was sent to me by the funding agency. So I did uh sign that uh letter on behalf of the town. So we had this community town hall meeting on November fifteenth. And I, as I said, I wanted to give you a brief history. Uh, so on February ninth and, and the uh fourteenth. Ryan, uh the ambulance director and I participated in two meetings with Cam Garrett, Dick Young. Dr. John Kroger, Jonathan Busco and Katie Butler. The talking points were around the relationship between ICMS and EMS. And the I, ICMS providers responding to E nine one one calls. The position of Cam Garrett is that this is a burden to the providers. And the extra expense to ICMS was not sustainable. So that was, those were the two early meetings that Ryan and I had with this group. Um, so the proposed health access evaluation and solutions for vinyl haven island in the form of a grant. Was presented to the select board on February fourteenth. We were told that the municipal employee, a municipal employee must be involved because if. Because of possible decisions about taxation and budget. My notes at the time um. Stated that the opportunities are good, but if we don't know what the proposal will be, it's difficult to buy into this process. I was very skeptical about the time commitment and having staff to facilitate the work. So on February twenty first. There was a uh, the proposal for vinyl haven to sign on to the main health access foundation grant. Funded planning project was presented, oh, I'm sorry, I got the dates wrong. Um. That was the date, February twenty first is when it was presented to the board. Uh, only three members of the board were present at that meeting, and there was some pressure to commit the program as the application was due that next week. So there, again, there had to be kind of a hurried decision, uh which put a little bit of pressure on the board. But you did authorize me to sign that letter of support. So, a little more history going back a little further. Uh, in the initial proposal that the slide presentation that they gave to the board. It did, it stated that from March twenty twenty two to December of twenty twenty two. Dr. Jonathan Busco had been in conversations with Cam Garrett and with the ICMS board. That was almost one year before coming to the town select board. So. They had a long uh. Series of conversations before it even came to the town. And then on November fifteenth, uh prior to the town hall meeting. Ryan and I uh had received a PowerPoint presentation with slides that we would be used that evening so that we could review it. Uh, one hour before the tall town hall meeting at four thirty, we received a revised set of slides. With four new ones that had been inserted by Cam Garrett, and we had no opportunity to review that, review those slides. Uh, and we were both pretty disappointed in that fact that. We were given a presentation and told that this is, this is what the presentation is gonna be, and then it was altered. Exactly one hour before we were even going to the town hall meeting. These new slides included more detail about the Health Resource Services Administration and federally qualified health centers. Uh, and the reimbursement for services. You're, we are being told. That this HERSA or Health Resources Service Administration. Will not reimburse for emergency services. Or I guess the way I interpret that is when the providers go on nine one one calls. We've also received conflicting information from other parties about the eligibility of our emergency services for reimbursement. I'm not an expert in this area, so it's really disconcerting to have this conflicting information. And there's all kinds of information out there. My interpretation of the town hall meeting was that most people want the emergency services to remain the same. With providers responding to E nine one one calls along with the EMTs. And I guess the big thing that I want you to be prepared for is a financial ask during budget preparations from ICMS. Because it's always about money. And that's what, I just wanted to give you my take and review and history of what's. Happened with this program from my perspective.
Thank you.
Brian, what's your take on, on the lack of? Medical personnel accompanying you guys? Do you feel comfortable without it, or is it something you really think we need?
I think it's really hard to say that we would be better off without having that, you know. Personally, see a lot of scenarios where that's at the wrongest benefit to us. Um. Think, she, Andy and I and agenda, we're all kind of. Drive at the same thinking point that, let's, what's best for our patients first and try to build our system around that. Um, I'm, I find a lot of the ideas that have been kind of discussed during this process sort of interesting. Um, we talked about how other municipalities handle this in rural places. I think a lot of that is really interesting information. Um, I don't. Know how much of that applies to what we have here, cuz what we have here is really quite unique and unlike even most of the other unbridged islands in Maine. Uh, love this, they just, they don't operate the way that we do, that they don't have the medical challenges that we do. So what we have here is very unique and I'm not, I've yet to see something comprehensive that convinces that what we have now is. Not better than some other possibility.
There was a seeming strong consensus at the hearing that what vinyl haven has now. Is very good and very popular. So, uh, uh. There was no, if I could tell. Consensus to change anything except to ensure there's funding and future staffing so that it can continue.
Well, the other thing that I would look at is on the mainland, in many cases, the cities in particular. I'm guessing he, but I don't know this, Ryan. I'm assuming that the lack of uh. Having medical personnel with you is probably a bigger issue here, cuz I suspect that when you have full-time emergency. Uh, people that, that probably have a lot more training and capable of handling some of the things that. Your volunteers may or may not be able to. And that's my concern. We could have someone die just because we don't have qualified people on site.
And also the fact that to uh, you know, somebody is, is injured that badly to have to transport them to the medical center. First, you know, to go see the provider there, it, it does, just doesn't seem to make sense to me, but. Anyway.
Why, why back to something Marge said about um. This conflicting on how it's getting funded, that the emergency services won't be provided by this HRSA. But I think we talked about in another meeting that they, that was being covered and they, they, it was getting covered in the end anyways by insurance or this, that or the other. Is there a way that we can actually get a definitive answer on that?
Well, we're told that there is a letter that HERSA wrote to the ICMS, giving their reasons. Uh, we could request that letter from ICMS and actually see what's in that letter.
And also, back to the financials, what, um, I had to leave the meeting uh the, that night early, but. Um, what would exactly is the reasoning that they will not share their financial report with you, Marjorie?
Uh, I was told that they were too complex and they were difficult to understand and I, I probably, I don't know. The implication being that I wouldn't understand them.
I would think, I would think that if they're gonna require or ask, I should say. We, you think the uh board should be prepared for a financial ask? Well, that's all well and good. Maybe the town would, would agree to something like that, but I don't think it would, they would if. If they aren't gonna share the financial report with us, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, before, before we give any money, we're gonna have to see the books too or whatever. That's, that's my stance. Once, once the town starts putting money into it, in my mind, that's public knowledge.
Well, I don't know that they are gonna ask money, but that's my interpretation.
I think that's what we all will, are led to believe, that they, you know, haven't asked. So, Dawn?
Well, I had a, uh, you know, we went through a lot of the grants. Or the opportunity for grants when we were talking about housing and stuff for police. But I know at the time, there were a hell of a lot of grants out there that were applicable to EMT work in particular. Why haven't uh, now is that something that we should be talking to the uh medical group about and getting trying to see? Can we get a grant? Because it appears to be grants out there. At least that's what I'm being told.
There are a couple of grants I'd like to look at in the next fiscal year, specifically around community paramedicine. Um, that's becoming a lot more common for services in Maine, which I talked a little bit about it before, but essentially your EMS personnel are able to do low level house calls. Um, to places in your municipality. Um, it's like home safety checks, you know, blood pressure checks, medication compliance. Um, simple stuff like that, that just kind of allows our EMS force to do more work and get more experience and provide more. Uh, valuable work to the community. That's something I'd like to pursue very closely. Um. There are some other grants related to funding for um training and then paying EMS staff as well. Um, the EMTs particularly, um, like provider level staff, that's sort of a different area, uh but. Uh, I tried to follow a grant last year specifically around mental health training, um, to provide for EMS staff. I wasn't able to. Make close enough connections with the organizations I needed to facilitate that process with. Um. To communicate that well in the grant, essentially, to say that I have these.
I think it was well written.
I worked very hard on this grant, but I did not have enough.
It wasn't seen that you had enough.
Did not have enough traction with uh partner organizations. Um. Nothing local, but other places to build into that to justify it. Uh, so unfortunately, we didn't get that one. Uh, it's something I'd like to revisit again. I'd like to continue doggedly pursuing that. It's certainly a significant issue.
I'd like to suggest we follow up with the medical group, find out if it makes sense for them to apply for a grant. To cover these costs. I mean, that would be one that would be applicable and I think would be in there barely would.
Pam, Ellen's.
Oh, I don't see your hand. Go ahead.
I thought at the meeting that the consultant, I can't remember his name, I think. Yeah, I thought he mentioned that he was gonna go, that he's on a board or committees and he was gonna go back to the people who are in charge of this federal grant. And explain to them that rural situations are not like cities, where you put someone in an ambulance and three minutes later, you're. In an, in an emergency room, in a hospital, with all kinds of technicians and specialists. That in rural situations such as vinyl haven, which is, you know, out in the middle of the ocean. Um, you need providers and you need this level of coverage and that they should pay for it. In the grant. And I thought if, if I didn't misunderstand, Ryan, you were there, right? Did I misunderstand that he was gonna go back to them and try to explain this to them and how? It would be beneficial to rural areas to, to cover providers in the ambulance?
Um, I'm not sure I recall specifically which organization. What, what specific line thought you were referring to?
I think it was the federal grant that, that Cam said wasn't covering the service.
Yeah, I remember. And it was to change HERSA. Standards. I took it to be a long-range project, not one that's gonna benefit us in the near future.
No, go right ahead. George, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, I guess the question for Marjorie, when you started your description of this item, agenda item. You were talking about a grant that was paying for the planning process?
So Jonathan Busco and his group uh. Uh, in, early in twenty twenty two. Came to the medical center and spoke with Cam Garrett and he has um grant funding. And this is a planning grant. Maybe I'm not answering your question.
Well, the real question is, was the grant a joint grant with the town and Medicare? Or was it just for the town?
We didn't apply for any grant.
Okay, so you have no leverage on this consultant. That's where I was going.
He has his own grant to do the study with.
We were asked to sign on.
As a supporter.
To support this program.
And never to get the grant, he was required to, I understand you've said correctly. Come to us, come to the town and.
So I guess the real, the real point of my question is, do you have the leverage to ask the consultant or instead of this consultant? Answer some of the questions the town has? And you were talking about the books, you were talking about the finances, about the coverage of uh all of this, it's down to the, there's.
What?
Miscommunication or discommunication?
The answer that they gave. The answer that they gave me was that. They have already established that our. Methods are not sustainable, they've, that they've already established that. So now we as a town have to move forward with these work groups to find another way. At least that's my simple take on. What they said, they said that they've already established that this is not sustainable.
Maybe the medical.
These Jonathan Busco and ICMS and the planning, this planning group. So we have to find another way through these work groups.
So I'll just add, George, to your question, I don't believe. Anyone from the town has specifically asked Jonathan Busco yet. To request the medical center that we receive more detailed financial information or copy of the letter from HERSA. I don't believe there's a formal request for that, there's been talk about. Looking at financials and we've kind of been told that that's a later part of the process and. We already, what Marjorie said, there's a opinion that it's already unsustainable, so we'll dig into that later. But there has not been a specific request for those.
Andrea.
I am Andrea.
Yes, sorry, I was coughing. Sorry, Andrea.
Andrea Hogan, and before I make first an observation and then a question, I need to make it abundantly clear. That I am here speaking on behalf of myself, myself only, based on my experience as both an EMT and a former. That being established, you guys have. Uh, a real rock star in your midst, and I hope that you recognize that. Though he is young, he has handled the stress of this incredibly well. And, and I really hope that you all see the value in Ryan through this process, this is incredibly stressful.
Thank you, we absolutely do.
But second, if you're, my question is this, if you're going to be requesting that HERSA letter. I'm assuming this was not the first HERSA review that the medical center went through. This, this method has been in place for quite some years, am I correct in that? I'm, I'm only, for those that don't know me, I relocated here a year ago, but my husband has been here since twenty eighteen. So.
We don't know.
But they've been through HERSA reviews before, correct?
I would assume that.
Yes.
So what changed? And would that be an appropriate question when you're also asking for that letter? What's different from the prior review? Thank you.
Lisa?
I'm kind of wondering. Talking about this now, is this Jonathan, I mean, he seemed very. Responsive and, and very friendly, but. This seems like he, that he came here and opened a Pandora's box, he got his grant. And he needed support. And all of a sudden. I mean, yes. Obviously, this isn't sustainable, but it's been working and Cam said at the meeting. She likes it as it is, so I'm not sure why this happened. I mean, seeing it in retrospect, I mean, this guy got a grant and he needed support. And he just picked out rural communities that he thought. You know. Things weren't working, but they are working and he actually did state. You can change it or you can go ahead and go forward and do what you've been doing. And am I incorrect that Cam actually said she was fine with? Going ahead and doing what's working now?
I think Cam is to my.
Okay, in the meetings here, she did not say those things. It's fucking, with my memory's gone really bad, I don't recall.
Yeah, November fifteenth, she did.
Yeah.
So I think specifically she's indicated that. The ICMS board has voted to continue to support the operation we have right now. Until we have another.
HERSA.
Identified solution where that may be, um, I don't believe their intent is to continue this in perpetuity. That's, that's my understanding, I think it's, like Dawn said, it's been made pretty clear.
You know, going back to the meeting we had here and. I think Pam inter, interject if I'm getting it wrong, but my understanding was, we had the meeting because we had. A lot of issues and they want, and there was concern about cost and how to, how to fund it and manpower and stuff. But, so the ops, the meeting with Briscoe was, he was, came in and proposed, he would look at all these options and lay them out. And he needed the support for us to get the grant to do that. And it, and the. Last meeting we had with him, uh, there were a number of issues that we talked about, it wasn't just uh, the EMS calls. We were talking about Penobscot Air not doing this job, we're talking about uh, the trips on the boat. Now, how can we do more here rather than sending someone to Rockland? And we asked, you know, what do they, what do, what do they need to do to make sure that we can treat as many as possible on the island without. Unnecessary risk to personnel. You know, that need medical attention. So that was kind of the way it was left, we were looking at an overall option to have better. Performance with the standing people or be treating people before we send them to the mainland, so I think that. You know, we're. I'm really not sure where, how we get to the, where we were to that meeting on the fifteenth, doesn't make sense.
Well, I have to tell you that. The last year. That Andy was here. I was asked to attend a meeting with him and. Cam and two members of the board. And what year was that, um, twenty-one, twen- no, was it pre, well, I can't remember what the last year of Andy's, it must, when he was town manager. And my impression at that meeting was that. It was about money and HERSA and. Cam very much indicated that they were going in the hole. Nobody else was at the meeting, the, um, at the time, the ambulance director hadn't been invited. And I was left with a very confused. I was confused at the end of that meeting and I was not pleased and never heard any more about it until. All of a sudden, Mr. Doctor Busco. Appeared, so. Maybe, I don't know, I don't know what was going on, but. I was uncomfortable, to be perfectly honest. And I'm sure. I don't know if Andy kept minutes, but.
Ellen, did you still have a question?
Well. Ellen has a question.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Thank you, Cam. Um, I recall that the new doctor, I was trying to remember his name, I was looking on my phone, but I can't find it, the new doctor. Kroger, yeah, he spoke very highly of the way the medical center operates and the EMS operation providers, he said it's unique. He's never seen anything like it before, it's, it's fantastic. And, you know, I think we have these kinds of, um. People from away who come here with enormous amounts of experience like Ryan and Dr. Kroger, Kroger, you know, the. What we're doing is right, what they're doing is right, we just have to find a way to pay for it, if that's the problem.
Marjorie, what do we, what do you think we need to do to put in a formal request to see this letter? What's required, what would be required to? Formally request, a request to review that letter where funding was denied?
Well, I mean, on the easy side, it seems like I should just be able to send an email to Cam to say, can we have a copy of that letter? If it gets more formal than I. I think because they're a federally qualified health, what is it, health center or something? We should be able to do a FOIA request if it's that difficult to get information.
And I agree with also asking what, what changed? Like why?
So maybe a letter.
Yeah, before. If we do have to talk about handing out money. I wanna know what, what.
Well, again, I don't know that there, that's, but it seems pretty likely.
We don't really need to go there, I think it's more of the board is concerned because the town has concerns. And we would like to see, the board as a whole would like to see. Uh, the, the, the recent letter and, and past letters so we can ascertain what, what's changed and. And have a good idea of what's going on so we can make informed decisions. I don't know if we need, I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm out of this, I'm. Out of the loop, I've been out of the loop because I'm on the board and this all was started and I missed the meeting. But, you know, if, I, I guess the, I, I would love to see the letter. And have a, try to get a little better understanding of what the issue is. And previous letters if they're available. I don't know how the response would be, but maybe there's something we should find out.
I agree. Lisa has a question? Um, go ahead.
I think, I don't wanna speak for everybody in the town, but I myself, and I believe everybody in the town would absolutely support. Um, more taxation for EMS, if that's what it came down to, but I think, and this did come up November fifteenth and. Cam got a little bit. Tasty about it, um, I think we need. Not an exact breakdown, but an example of. How much they're losing per call. Per EMS call. Um, so we get an idea as to. You know, what, what a budget or what, what more we have to put in as a town.
I understand what you're saying and it's a good question. The thing that I keep thinking about is that this town has been doing it this way. I came here in two thousand two, we've certainly been doing it since then.
Right.
And maybe, you know. So that's twenty years or more and, and I think they've been doing it for ten years before with Dr. Donahue, I don't know how many years. So. If we've been doing it for thirty years or more, why is it suddenly unsustainable?
When I was a kid. The doctor was EMS.
Boss.
Doc, Doc, Doctor O'Keefe had an, a suburban and that was the ambulance and that, when there was an emergency call, he went. That was the only response. And it all before him.
Yeah.
Millie, Millie's got her hand up behind her.
Can I speak?
Go ahead, Millie.
So I'm one of the founders of the ambulance. As Dr. O'Keefe was, was still here just before Donahue left. And the ambulance service, I, I ran it for seventeen years after that. And the ambulance service has always had providers available to come to calls when needed. We had a certain little protocol that went with it, so they did not have to come on every single call if there was a broken shoulder or. Or something to that effect, they, they would opt to stand by, so to speak. Um, but they've always, always, since the beginning of the ambulance service. Responded as needed for the ambulance service, just as they do now. Shouldn't change.
So something changed. I guess that's, that's the, that's the thing to dig into. What changed?
Well, it, it's complicated because the whole, this whole process is complicated. And I'm not opposed to looking at the options and seeing where we are, what we want to do. But I do think that right now we're just going round and round in circles. And I would suggest that we kind of get our heads together and say, what are we trying to achieve? And how do we go about doing it? Cause right now, there's, you look to the medical center, you look at the history and I know that, you know, the town gave the land, they gave the building. Uh, to that, so there's, there should be some compensation back and forth. But before we go there and, and make all these things, I think we really need to have a meeting with the medical center. I'm not sure who will be involved in this, but right now we're talking at each other, not working together. And we need to work together to fix this thing.
Good point.
I'll see where we go. And otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels here.
Lisa has a hand up.
All right.
Mention too, that Ryan is. Absolutely beneficial. And if we need more funding to keep him to. You know, train him to be a paramedic, I think that's extremely worthwhile also. To keep his job sustainable.
That's one of the options we could be looking at, I think we need to get them all together instead of making a decision tonight where we're gonna go. We don't have the facts, we don't, we really don't even have a direction where we wanna go yet. And that was what Briscoe was supposed to be.
Well, there, there are these three work groups that are planned.
Yeah.
And I'm. Personally not really clear on what the work groups are supposed to accomplish, but there are. Three, I'm sorry, three, three work groups. Of community members. That are getting together to look at different aspects of things that were discussed.
And when, is there gonna be a report on this meeting and whatnot from the? ICMS on? What the result and with all the work?
Or?
What's that?
It will result in a report from Jonathan Busco and his. Um, how does he call it, uh, sorry.
Planning group.
Health Act, Health Services Access Needs Assessment. We have. What? Yeah, sure.
Um, so. My understanding of this is the work groups are going to get together, they're going to look at. Um, possible options, things based on what the. Community has indicated they're interested in, which is essentially what we have, um, we're gonna look at different options available to us. Um, other avenues we might follow, that work group is going to condense those options. That gets brought back to a similar kind of town meeting to what has happened already, the community gives feedback on that work. But back to work group, back to community, back to work group, and then eventually at the end of the projects, we have an comprehensive plan that goes to town.
Ryan, are you part of one of these work groups?
Uh, I will be attending all of these.
Okay, so if we. Have probably discussed this to the point of. This Dawn's kind of going around in circles. Um, I do wish the medical center had more transparency. In, um, in all this, but. It is what it is, I guess.
We just need to work.
What's that, Dawn?
We just need to start working together instead of talking to each other.
Yeah. Okay, is there any more discussion on this? Madhuri, do you have anything else you want to add to your report tonight?
Um, I did get a. Um, an email from Ben Plan, our attorney, that he sent in. The, um, I'm sorry, the. The motion for contempt. That you authorized him to do. So that went out on November twenty-first. And I don't know if the other selectmen, I know that, um. Did, I report that the Sheriff's Office had hired somebody, Peter Allen, okay.
All right. Last thing I remember, we talked about there was two people maybe. It was, what happened with that?
There's, there's. There is an issue, and I'm not quite sure what it is with the second person, the first person, far, far as I understand. He's basically finishing training and be ready to go soon.
That, that's what, yeah, we, that's why we had to wait, and then, but then there was a second person, maybe two.
I haven't gotten an update on that person in a while.
I talked to Kurt about it just briefly and he seemed to think that. That may not happen with this one person, but I'm not positive about that. I don't think he was even at the time.
Okay. And there was, uh, um, with the apartment, they asked if they could have a dog and the lease that we have. Uh, says that they can't, they don't allow pets.
This is for the guy, this is for the guy that's finishing up the training that we definitely would get.
Yes.
Yeah, so that was the last. Yeah, so that was the last question I received, so.
We could go to the landlord and, and request them to reconsider, maybe add a deposit.
Without permission.
Okay.
We haven't talked to, uh.
I just asked, well, I, actually I just read the lease. That's all I've done. Um, anything else on that or? I also have these two trailers that I still have down at the, um.
I thought we were gonna put that in the land.
We did, we said, you know, if you don't.
The last time you asked, asked if you could.
I thought we were gonna auction them.
Oh, did I already get permission to sell them? Okay, I don't, did I?
I think, I think we, I think we gave you permission to do that, um, the, either the last meeting, I believe.
Last meeting.
When was that?
The fourteen-fourteenth.
I do recall the conversation, because Tom sent.
To advertise abandoned trailers for sale by sealed bid.
Oh, sorry.
No, I didn't remember it either.
And I'm the one with COVID here.
I'm still recovering, Pam.
I'll do a little bit more research, try to get a VIN number, see if I can find a registration, but, I mean, come on.
Enough, enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just get rid of them.
Yep.
Okay, is there anything further? Anybody wanna add to Marjorie's report? We'll move on to number eleven, report of members. Anything from you guys?
Uh, what Millie's still, she left.
She's still there.
No, she's still there.
Millie, Millie's still here.
With the, with the North, with the North Haven Road in the Meadow, which went through another episode of this, this last couple of days. And I've talked to Millie and I've talked to, uh, some other people. And we really need to fix this thing. I don't have any confidence of all and, or that it's the right move to make, that the consultants have recommended, which is gonna be over a million dollars plus. We believe that we can probably do this a lot easier with some fill using granite blocks in front of it there.
Having some Jersey barriers.
Well, we could, we, we could do something, but we have plenty of granite around. It would cut probably pretty easily with it. Well, what we need to, so we could adjust it. What I was gonna suggest is, and I have spoken to Millie about this, we should maybe look at, uh, Woodward and Company, so let's get the permits for us. Layout, we'll lay out what we wanna do and get the permit so we can go ahead and block that flow. And then adjust the level so we get the circulation we're after, but not have the flooding. It'll be trial and error, but over a very brief period, probably a couple of high tides, maybe three or four. When we have, we could probably get this thing, so we remove the flooding. We don't have to spend two million dollars, if we had to do both things that they recommend.
And maintain the wetlands.
Yeah. So.
My recollection with that, because the, a lot of those discussions took place when the flooding started back in two thousand five, two thousand six. And the answer that we got from the permitting agencies, DEP and Army Corps, was that you can't do that. So, I mean, I can re, certainly revisit it. I don't mind doing that. But that was the answer that we got, that you can't just throw rocks back in there, so.
Uh, I wanna go ahead and, and go back to that, but I think we can.
Uh, I don't think the waste gate system is.
That's not gonna happen.
That's not.
That's absolutely crazy. That's a hard no. I don't see why, like you say, the DEP will let us block it back up. The only difference now is it still stinks, just like it did before. We just don't have the green slime on top of the water and they've killed all the trees around there. That's the only, only thing that whole project did, so hopefully we can just dam it back up. Uh, and I was under the impression that there was a sunset, there was a sunset period where we, we couldn't alter. But now we could go back.
The grant was used to.
Yeah.
In the first place.
Yeah, and it was totally screwed up, obviously.
And now we could before, but that whole gate system. I mean, they said ice wouldn't bother it. I guess they forgot when they put that in, the wings on the culverts crumpled in from the ice the first year and they had to cut them out and rebuild them. That gate thing is just crazy.
Alrighty. Not being an engineer of any kind, I'm not gonna have any comment. Um, I guess we'll have to just wait and talk to, uh, have Marjorie talk to them and find out about what, what has to hap, what permits and such. You also got the fact that there's wetlands there, I don't know. Who knows?
When, um, uh, George, um, Plutra asked for help because he has that narrow piece of property anyway. And he asked for some assistance in, um, filling in in front of his property. Do you know what I'm talking about?
George Clute's, yeah.
Uh, the, the permit, the permitting that we had to do for that was quite extensive to put that fill in there and put the rocks. We put some rocks around in kind of a semi-circle and then filled it in.
Right.
Anyway.
I just think we didn't try it because we're looking at potentially a couple of million dollars and let's face it, that road didn't sink, didn't flood until we screwed up the culvert up there to the Grange Hall, so.
Um, Dawn, I think you're wrong there. I remember when we were kids, there was a, the water was over the road because I was, my sister and I were with my grandmother and we were coming down from the North Haven End. And a car towing a U-Haul went through the, the water over the road. And I'll never forget, it just completely enveloped the car and the trailer. And we were hysterical laughing, my sister and I were just kids. And my grandmother said, boy, they're not gonna be able to stop that, that car for a long time because their brakes will be so wet. And that was probably back in the nineteen-sixties, so I do have to disagree. I think that has flooded for a long time.
I disagree. I know it might have flooded.
Dawn, I did not imagine seeing that car towing that trailer going through that water.
I'm saying, well, they, once in a while you have an extremely high tide.
Okay, exactly. But it has, it has been flooding there for a long, long time.
Yeah. Well, I've seen three and four foot waves in the downtown parking lot too. So, you know, it's not a, you know, if that was a extraordinary event at the time.
Okay, let's, um, uh, move on if anybody else has anything else they want to discuss. You all set?
I have one for you very quickly. The ball ground. I, I know it's wetting the devil now, but is there any chance we're gonna get that mowed before the skating season comes along?
There, there, there's a group now.
Did you go by there to, did you go by there today?
Millie's waving her hand.
Really did who?
Millie.
I went, Steve and I drove by there today and there, there's no possible way that there's any kind of a piece of equipment gonna get in there to mow those, to mow, that's impossible. I mean, Sean, Sean Chilis had, he said he, he would try, but he said it's just too wet. He's not gonna risk ruining his equipment. And Millie is the same, of the same opinion with the town tractor. And you've never, you've never mowed in that, Millie, before anyway.
No, we, we wouldn't be able to take a sickle in there, but apparently George Andrews went down today and weed whacked down there. I don't know how low he got it or what happened, but I'll look at it. And if it looks fine, I will flood it, but if not, I'm not going to.
If he weed whacked, I don't know where he did weed whack. There was no indication of anybody having been in there with any kind of a sickle or a weed whacker. I mean, maybe he went in, but I don't know.
Tony Limbo, uh, mowed the outside today, the part, you know, the, where, where our tractor doesn't reach up on the sidewalk and such, and it looked really good, so I thank him for that, but he.
Right.
He looked with even just his ride more. He went in and walked around a little bit. He came right back out and said, nope. Not doing it, but I don't know, again, how much has been done down there. I will definitely look at it in the morning on my way to work.
Why, why couldn't, why couldn't we burn it? Do fire train and burn it? They used to do that.
And I don't.
Had a couple of dry days that that top.
It's preserved. You can't do, we're not even supposed to mow it.
Well, you know, it's, it's in conservation easement through MCHT. So they're very generous to have let us open up the ball ground hill. Um, and do what we can there, but to do anything with the, with the, around there um, in the ball ground itself, you know, it's taking a risk of having them call the DEP on the town. If we did something that they disapproved of. I mean, there's nothing we can do about the conservation easement.
Ellen's got her handle.
I'm sorry? Bye Andrea, sorry.
Ellen, thank you.
Oh, Ellen, I can't see, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, why don't you just give a call to Jay and Arbuckle at Menko's Heritage Trust, who's the head of stewardship? And just tell her what the dilemma is and ask if you, if you have permission to burn it.
Oh, okay, I think we need to, I think we need to just hold on a second. I don't think we need to open up a can of worms. Let's take a step back and see what happens in the next few weeks. If it doesn't, if we don't get any more huge drains, maybe it can be mowed. But if you guys looked at what is growing there, it's not grass, like grass. It's.
Marsh grass.
It's what?
Marsh grass.
Yeah, I mean, it's thick, heavy grass.
To just, I, I would like to just keep it in my, um, ballpark if I can and as I said, I'll look over it, I'll watch it. Um, if there's a chance that we can flood it, obviously I'll do that. I want it flooded as well as everybody else. But I also, um, need to keep in mind that we don't need saltwater um, or mixed saltwater, freshwater going into the, um, pump station uh, and things like that. So, you know, if they, if, if somebody volunteers and can get it cleaned up, I have no problem flooding it, but, I mean, really, that's, that's the bottom line is if it gets cleaned up enough, we certainly can flood it, but I don't think it needs a, a huge discussion or.
No, everybody, we all want the ball ground to be able to be used for skating. And that, we all agree with that. So, um, I don't know what else to say. I don't think there's much more discussion we can have on it. It's mother nature. Lots of rain. We had eight inches of rain in September. That's usually when it's mowed.
It's been a wet year.
It has. And it's not the first, first year. It happened a couple of years ago. We went through the same thing. So it is unfortunate. And whoever decided it was a wetland certainly don't remember the old Vinyl Haven teams playing baseball in there, do they?
No, they do not.
No. We all set here? Do you want to move to adjourn? Yes? Okay, on favor? Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Next meeting is, um, uh, next meeting is, uh, twelfth, December twelfth.
Um, looking even ahead of that.
Hey, Lucy?
Yeah.
I think we should wait until we have.
Okay.
To discuss because I don't wanna go a whole month.
Right, because that puts us, it puts us right after Christmas, but we could do.
I mean, I don't mind coming in for a meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Getting ready beforehand, getting the packets ready is when I was more thinking, like, if we meet the twenty-seventh and then we're going for Christmas. We can talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, or it doesn't have to be the twenty-seventh, it could be the twenty-eighth.